Good afternoon and welcome to the March 21st meeting of the Historic Zoning Commission, City of Murfreesboro. It appears we do have a quorum present, so we'll call the meeting to order now. First up, we will approve our minutes from the February 21st meeting. Everyone had a chance to review. I would like to mention one correction, please. On item number two, page three, I'd like the minutes to reflect that I was not in favor of the side lights on that front door. That one moved kind of quickly on us. Anything else, anybody notice it might need to be changed?
Yeah, Amelia, I was against that as well, the style. I mean, we agreed lights, but not that style.
And that, Mary May, was a no on the side lights.
That thought we suggested. Didn't we suggest the center light?
End of them.
Well, the side lights would be the surrounding, those are little windows that surround.
Oh, those, yeah.
Not actual lighting.
Yeah.
So it did approve, but...
Yeah.
There are no other corrections? Entertain a motion?
Make a motion, we approve all the corrections.
Second.
First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries, thank you. All right, now we will move on to our new business. First up, we're considering 324 East College Street. Amelia, would you introduce that?
Yes.
Item for us?
Thank you Chair Jakes, members of the commission. 324 East College Street, John and Laura Van Zant are requesting review for the construction of a new two-story detached garage and additional fencing within their yard. This property is located on the south side of East College Street, a few lots to the east of North Academy Street, adjacent to Junior's feud land to the south. The two-story, single-family house was constructed circa 1912 with an exterior stucco siding and a wraparound porch. This house is a contributing structure in the North Maney Avenue Historic District of the National Register of Historic Places. The property contains approximately 2.2 acres and is zoned RS8. It is also in the Historic Zoning Overlay District as well as the CCO, City Core Overlay District. The applicant is requesting to construct a 576 square foot, two-story garage and new fencing. The architectural elevations, drawing in the plot pen showing the garage location fence, additions and materials are included in the agenda that you all had for today. The applicant's employed James &amp; Associates to coordinate the design of the new garage structure to best match and complement the existing home, matching the overall roof, overall shape and roof style. The applicants are asking for a review to look at the exterior material, which is a cedar Nietzsche board, Precision Millwork Series 2000 wood double hung windows, Oak Ridge Estate Gray Architectural Shingles, wood stained metal garage door, garage exterior lighting fixtures, and removal and replacing of some existing chain link fencing and replace it and add some additional fencing around the yard with wood picket fencing. Pictures of the home as it exists today, I'll go through those, and the applicant is also attending today to answer any questions that you may have regarding this request. So Bill, if you want to just go through each one of those items and have everybody discuss them and bode on them individually.
That sounds good, that sounds good. And I would say that that was a .2 acre size lot there, instead of the two. All right, would the applicant or representative please approach the podium, state your name and address for the record, please?
John Van Zant, 324 East College.
All right, John, thank you so much for being here. We're going to go through each one of these items that you've got on your request form and deal with them one item at a time. First up is the exterior material for the garage, cedar Nietzsche board. I've got to admit, I'm not familiar with the term Nietzsche board. Is that something like a Hardy board?
Yeah, it's just a different brand.
Okay.
Same materials.
Okay. Is, okay, good, you've got an example here. I was going to ask if it was a textured or smooth, it appears that it is textured.
It's just the version of the Hardy board that Haynes Brothers stocks.
Can't help but ask, do you know what the reveal will be? That's a pretty wide board there, how much of that will be exposed?
I believe it's a half inch.
Eight and a quarter reveal, okay. We have any other questions about this material?
I know we don't regulate color, but is it going to be creamy like your house?
It'll be, yeah, very similar to the house. We may lighten the shade, we're planning it, repainting the house slightly lighter, closer to a off-white.
I'm sorry, closer to what?
Closer to a cream than, it's almost a yellow now, we'd like to go just a little bit lighter shade.
Okay.
And that, the material on the siding is, this house is stucco, correct?
That is correct.
No? Not? We would entertain a motion for the approval of the siding.
Removed?
David first.
Second.
Linda's a second. Any other discussion on this? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? No. All right, that motion carries. Siding is approved. Next up is the Precision Millwork Series 200 double hung windows, wooden windows. Is this a wood composite or a solid wood window?
The windows are solid wood, there's some composite in the frame.
Okay. Okay, so the sashes are wood. Questions about the, how many windows are in this?
I don't remember the exact count.
Okay, all right, let's see.
There's two on the front, well, two doubles on the front, that's all that will be visible. Actually, only one of those double windows is visible from the street.
Yes, I see them in your drawings here now. Okay. Great.
I've moved to approve.
Okay, Gibb, first, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Jeff, second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Windows are approved. Next up are the shingles, the Oak Ridge Estate Gray Architectural Shingles. Fairly common shingle around the neighborhood. How would you say these compare to the existing shingles on the house?
I believe they're identical. There might be a very slight color, without climbing up on the roof and laying them side by side.
Yep.
It was as close as we could match.
Okay.
Moved to approve.
Okay. Gibbs first, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, first and a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries for the shingles. Next up is your garage door, you have a wood stained metal garage door. So it has the wooden appearance, but it is a metal garage door.
Yes, sir, it's a metal door painted with a wood texture.
Yes, absolutely, it looks good.
So what about that? Metal doors as opposed to wood doors in historic?
I believe that's something we've seen before here.
I think so, I just wanted to be sure.
Yeah, I recall we have approved this sort of door in the past because it has the wooden look to it. And they're difficult to find and maybe cost prohibitive in an actual wooden.
Wood.
Any other questions for the applicant?
I think if you, the photo's up on the screen.
Yeah, they have it here, looks great.
I moved, we approve the doors.
Jeff, first, do we have a second?
A second.
Mary May, second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay, the garage door is approved. Making short work of this for you here.
I don't know.
All right, next up is your lighting fixtures, the garage exterior lighting fixtures, I see them on the screen here.
Yeah, that's what we need, Amelia, great, thank you.
All right, the location over the two doors and over the main door entry to the left elevation. These are all matching?
Yes.
Similar style? Okay. Do we have any questions about the lighting?
So they're over the doors and where else, I'm sorry, I can't see where it is.
On the left elevation, there's one over the entry door.
Oh, yes, yes, thank you. Now, are these similar to the one you have to the side of your house on the porch?
I don't believe we have one on the porch.
Don't you have one out there?
No, not on the side.
We have some pendant fixtures.
Oh, on the?
On the porch.
Yes.
They're close, I mean, they're one.
Yes, that's what I thought when I...
Yeah, the pendant fixtures are, you know, can't be mounted against the garage, so these are kind of flatter.
Yes.
They have the same little, there's a picture on somewhere.
Yeah.
We have it here, yes.
But, yeah, they're flatter, you just try to go with something, it was a craftsman that looked right, the house looked right, the neighbor's house, it's also a craftsman.
Okay. I moved, we approve.
Second. First, Jeff's a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? That motion carries. It's approved. Okay, last item, removal and replacement of the existing chain link fencing and addition of a wooden picket fencing. I believe we have a picture of that here in the plan as well. So using your typical pressure-treated dog ear planks spaced, I believe I saw that the height is going to be five feet?
That's the plan.
Okay, your rear fence, I believe, is eight where you adjoined the commercial property up?
That'll stay intact, the rear fence will leave intact, and then this will replace the side chain links and then tie to the garage and, between the garage and the house.
Okay.
But that part won't be visible from the street.
I see it noted on your plan here, you'll be doing the, just a short section between you and your western neighbor, then all along the side on the east, that's where the existing chain link is.
And then isn't there, and there's another existing?
On the western, west or southwestern corner. That's, that's a chain link that'll be replaced with the picket fencing as well.
Great.
Okay.
So does the one, the one behind you, does that belong to the Junior's property?
No ma'am, that was put on our property.
Is it?
Yeah, actually, there's a chain link behind the wooden fence, so Junior's has the chain link, but the wooden fence goes to this property.
Okay. I understand that, I was talking about the chain link. Can you take that down too? Or is that, is that on Junior's property?
That's outside our fence on the Junior's property.
Okay, okay.
But there are sections of chain link on the east and western sides that will be removed.
Okay. Any other questions about the fencing? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
So moved to approve.
Okay, first, Gibb?
Second.
All right, David has a second. No other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is approved. All right, that completes the items on your application.
Mr. Chairman.
There's one more item? Amelia, is that okay?
Roman, can they add, they had one little item that they want to add to this today.
Is it listed on the application? If it wasn't listed and wasn't noticed, I don't think we can get it on today's meeting.
I've got to come hard of hearing, Mary May, I can't hear what they're saying. Me either.
Mr. Chairman, I have one other general question. The total, and, sorry, just some of the fine print, I can't see or understand, but the total height of the garage in compared to the total height of your current, of the home itself?
It should be similar, they're both two-story structures with the similar roof pattern.
So you don't believe it would be higher than your current home?
No, I believe it's the same.
Okay, thank you.
I had that same, same question in my mind, David, because I can't, you know, we can't see the elevation, elevations together. But that's right, that is a two, is yours considered a story and a half, your dwelling?
It's pretty much a two-story, yes ma'am. The second story is slightly smaller than the first story, but just slightly smaller.
Okay.
I would have classified it as a one and a half, but the applicant was, said it was two stories.
Do you know the height of your house?
I do not.
Okay. I think our guidelines recommend that any new construction that goes along with a primary structure be proportionate in scale and size and so that it doesn't overwhelm the...
Right, and we provided that guidance to the architect who assured us that it was, but I don't know the exact height of the existing house.
Okay.
I do know it's a full two-story, you know, it's a two-story with a hip roof, which is the same thing we're doing with the garage.
Then, that completes our list. I apologize, we can't add your additional item today. I'm not sure if that's something that might be, that might qualify for administrative approval or not.
It's adding a driveway, just, you know, we have a gravel driveway, so we wanted to add a paved driveway. Do we have to go back to the historic commission to do that?
Don't recall if we have to do design review for driveways or not. I believe that's something that might could be handled.
I don't think it's in the guidelines, but I'm not positive.
I believe that it does fall in the category of needing approval, but maybe administrative approval, I can do that, I will check.
If it's a commonly used material that has been approved before, maybe. Okay.
Do you know what you were going to use? Concrete?
We're not sure yet, it just, it depends on the pricing.
We've seen blacktop and concrete, we've seen both along Main Street and on East College.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. On to our next item. 137 Cherry Lane, John and Peggy Taylor. The applicant or representative approach the podium and state your name and address for the record, please.
Jennifer Tibidale. Now go ahead and review this one.
Oh, yes, I need to let Amelia introduce the items for us, thank you.
Thank you Chair Jakes. 137 Cherry Lane, John and Peggy Taylor requesting to review for an exterior remodel of a single-family residence. The property is located on the west side of Cherry Lane, several lots to the south of East Lidle Street and north of East Main Street. The brick Tudor-style one and a half story, but, single-family house was constructed circa 1940. The property contains approximately .3 acres. It is zoned RS10 and HI Historic Zoning Overlay as well as the CCO Overlay District. The applicants are requesting to replace the existing wood and vinyl windows with Vin Win Tech 6000 series windows with the seven eighths inch simulated divided lights. There would be some brick repair on the left side of the house for window replacement and realignment. Replace existing solid wooden front door with a three-quarter wood and light door. Replace a four-inch white gutters with six-inch bronze gutters. Replace the fascia boards and remove the shutters. There were pictures of the home and neighboring homes in your agenda packet today, as well as material information. The applicant is here to answer any questions that the board may have for them.
Okay, wonderful. I did get ahead of myself a little bit there, so now, could the applicant please state the name and address for the record?
Jennifer Tibidale. My address for the property.
Your address, I believe.
3472 Emory Court.
Okay, thank you Jennifer.
And Andy Engelhardt, 1013 Creekview Drive, Columbia, Tennessee.
Wonderful, thank you Andy. All right, much like the last item, we're going to go through these, one item at a time, and discuss and ask questions and we'll take it from there. First up is our replacement of existing wood and vinyl windows with the ViWin windows with the seven eighths inch simulated divided lights. This states that these are, you're replacing the existing windows, but in the pictures it appears the windows are already installed.
Correct.
That's correct, okay. Could you tell us a little bit about how these windows were chosen?
Yes, they were chosen in regards to keeping the original look of the house intact. The property owner, Mr. Taylor, who is here, and his wife wanted to maintain the original look of the house, but have functioning windows that were maintenance-free. And without exception, I would say every window was painted shut and inoperable, as they were the, best we can tell, original windows to the structure. The frames were left, the sashes were replaced. And so the sashes are a double-hung vinyl, divided light, double pane, low-e insulated window, so it's energy efficient and operable. It also allowed for the removal of the storm windows, which were the aluminum storm windows that were applied to the outside. Throughout the installation process, as they were replaced, the wood frames, which were often rotten, in bad need of repair, were repaired where necessary, but then wrapped with new aluminum cladding. So every piece of original wood on the outside of the house is now wrapped in aluminum siding or cladding. And the idea was to, again, make them more energy efficient, operable, but maintain the original look to the building. That's how, that's how they were chosen.
Okay, good, good. So you did save the wooden surrounds?
Yes.
But they're wrapped in aluminum?
Yes.
And then the sashes are replaced?
Correct.
Okay.
There should be some pictures in there, oh, there are.
Yes.
Some close-up pictures so you can see.
But one of the keys was to not do the dividing lights in it to where they were between the glass, but they were actual exterior lights. So it does give the three-dimensional look to the panes.
What was the material of the windows that came out?
They were all wood, single-pane wood.
I have some here.
You do?
There were some vinyl and some of the existing.
What's the, when was the house built?
Around 1940s.
1940?
Yeah.
And there's vinyl in the windows that came off?
There were some vinyl replacement windows on the sides and the back.
So some were original and some were replacement?
That's correct.
So this, on some of them, this was the second time?
Correct.
And those were in the back or the front? The vinyl?
The front elevation was all wood. The sides and one of the back had, some of the sides and one of the back ones had been replaced with, at some point with vinyl. But they did all have grids in them.
In the glass.
Do you all live in the house now, or?
No. Mr. Taylor owns it and was just making significant repairs to water intrusion.
Who lives in the house?
Nobody right now.
Okay.
But it stays in their family.
Right, okay.
Mr. Taylor senior and junior.
Getting it ready to live in.
Okay, gotcha.
It was... It was habitable. It wasn't, it wasn't habitable, it just was not occupied, but is the intent to be so.
Well, I, I need to be honest, this does cause pause. The use of vinyl in the windows is not something that we're normally approving of, in the historic district. You know, National Park standards that we sort of tend to lean on suggest that the front elevation specifically should maintain the original material of the original windows. So this is, this is a difficult one. We're gonna have to discuss these details a little bit here. I, I appreciate that the original framing of the windows has been kept, although I'm not sure how we normally would deal with wrapping in aluminum. But I totally understand how a vinyl sash is gonna last longer. I appreciate that the mutton's on the outside instead of embedded in the windows, so I respect the, the effort that's been put into this. But it does put us in a little tight situation with the fact that they're already in there. Do we have any questions or?
Well, before we get into the detail, I'd like to know why you didn't come to this commission prior to starting the work? We, we didn't know we had to. That's the honest, that's the honest answer.
We started doing work on the inside for him, just to help facilitate, you know, changing out tile and stuff, and then the windows were added on at a later date to replace them.
In the process?
It was a maintenance thing, and it didn't quite honestly occur to us. Just 'cause it was a maintenance issue.
Who did the installation?
Home Building Products. I, I don't know the actual crew, but it was bought through them and installed by them.
Here on Castle Street.
You know, we've had this problem before where forgiveness is asked of us.
Yeah.
And, and we were a commission who had been committed to, to do and to follow through with what the original Historic Zoning Commission put together. And it took years for them to do that, and a lot of, a lot of hard work. And, and for us to just say, "Well, you did it, you didn't know," but that's, that's the problem, you see, because your neighbors have come to us when they, when they wanted to do some work. I know the Ramses came before us, Melinda Haines came before us, and there's another house on that street who's, I don't know, I can't remember the owners' names, but, and, and we've stuck with the rules on Cherry Lane, the rules that were, that were so diligently worked on. And, and we've, we've also asked on East College Street that the people who, they, they had an idea that this was historic zone, but they went ahead and put vinyl windows in. It's an apartment house, just two doors down from me, and we asked them to take them out. And we, we have that, we have that mandate. And it's, it's really hard when, when people ask forgiveness, rather than looking into a situation in their new neighborhood where they've moved, and, and asking us to make concessions all the time. And I don't know what to do. I mean, I'm, this is-
Is, is there room for precedent on the street for a house that already has vinyl windows in it and aluminum cladding?
Didn't we just?
Don't look that old. I, I don't know when they were replaced, but there is one right across the street that has replacement windows with grids between the glass. It's the exact same scenario that we are facing right here.
Precedent is a difficult topic. I've, I've thought a lot about that, because obviously things have happened under this commission's watch that maybe-
And that's one of the reasons why we assumed, because as we're in the neighborhood looking, I'm, I'm familiar with historic commissions, haven't done much work, but I have, in the past, had to bring things to get approved. This just did not even register that it was an issue.
I'm, I'm still kinda curious. So you're doing the work, but you're not going to live there, or you are going to?
I am not going to live there. Mr. Taylor hired us to facilitate-
Oh, you're gonna live there?
Yes.
Ideas, I don't know for sure.
Yeah, okay. So how long have you owned the house?
Twelve, twelve years.
Twelve years, okay. Did you have any idea that you were in the historic district?
Yes.
Okay. And you are doing the work for him. Is that correct, or why are you speaking?
That's correct, yes.
He's hired as our contractor.
Okay, 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 so.
That's correct.
Okay. So let me just speak to the precedent thing one more time. I, I don't really believe we do have precedent. What, what you have here is a body of, of, you know, citizens who live here, who are, are appointed. We don't get paid for this, and our task that we're to carry out is to protect the people in the historic district who have made a substantial investment in, in, in maintaining the standards of the historic district. And while some things may get passed and, and that, that shouldn't have, I don't think that creates a precedent.
Okay.
That really, it comes back down to the fact that you, you'll get a vote, and, and it may go one way or the other. I, I would like to point out, this, it's not an easy situation. I even have been doing a little homework, because I'm, I'm, you know, I'm certainly not here to try to make things more difficult on people. It's, it's, it's a, it's a difficult situation to be in, but just, you know, the, the National Park Service is, is basically the end-all when it comes to historic preservation, and they've written how things should be handled. And according to the historic preservation standards of the National Park Service, the, the, the front elevation of a home in a historic district is the most important. And, and specifically, they point out that historic windows should be replaced with matching materials, wood for wood, metal for metal. But there is a caveat. I can, I can find, I found for you that on secondary elevation, sides of the homes, with limited visibility, that they should be matched in size, configuration, and general characteristics, though the finer details may not need to be duplicated and substituted with materials. So what that leads me to is, I, you know, I believe there may be room for the windows on the side of the house, but the front windows really should not contain vinyl.
When I was referencing precedent, I wanted it to, that we made, we saw like kind, and that's why we didn't think it was an issue.
Right.
Not that we're wanting that to establish that the whole neighborhood should be able to say, "Well, it doesn't matter what we do." But that was the rationale behind that it was allowed.
Understood.
It is possible, of course, that a, a house may have been modified without us knowing it, or maybe we've made mistakes before, or, you know, a, a whole range of possibilities. And it looks like you have three double sashes, three in the, in the front?
Yes.
And just out of curiosity, I don't know that it's relevant, but, you know, what, what kind of money is that?
The whole window package?
Mm-hmm.
For the whole house?
Well, well, I'm wondering about the three.
Well, I'd have to back it out.
Yeah, okay.
The whole package was thirty grand.
So there was actually a lot of thought put into finding those, and we, I think we included the information. It was a historic, or they do historic replacement stuff, so it wasn't the cheapest windows that we chose.
Linda's having a hard time hearing you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, could you-
Could she see you in the microphone?
Um, I said, there should be an information brochure that we put in there, because the company that we chose specifically, um, they do a lot of historic homes, and you can see with some of their pictures, and it wasn't the, the cheapest window package. So it wasn't like, you know, went down to the Home Depot and got it.
Right.
They're a good company.
I mean, I, I, I hear where you're coming from. They, they do not look like cheap windows, and I know just replacing the, the sashes is not the easy way to go. That takes a lot of work to retrofit those into the existing opening.
But, but also, the gentleman who owns the house, you, you said that you did know you were in the historic district, that-
Yeah, I did know I was in the historic district. Is that your question? What was the question?
You said that you knew you were in the historic district.
That's right.
And so did you, did you look into that to see what, what the stipulations were for living in the historic?
Mr. Taylor, can we get you to come to the podium, please? Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, what did you think?
You knew you were in the historic district. Did, did you get any information about the responsibilities that we all have when we're in the historic district?
Ma'am, I'm just a little hard of hearing, and I just really can't understand the second part of your question.
Okay. I'm a little hard of hearing too, so I can understand. I'll try to speak up for you. I said, you knew you were in the historic district, and did you look into the stipulations and the, and the privileges that we have when we're in the historic district?
I didn't look at them, no ma'am, if that's what you're asking.
Help me out here, I can't hear.
Yeah. He, he did not look.
Okay.
I know, I know that my neighbor across the street has this same type of windows, so I guess I assumed that it was okay. His name is Mr. Bullard, Bob Bullard, and he's got the same windows that we're looking at. And I, I figured that if, if it was okay for two or three houses down through there to have them, it would be okay for us. And also, I guess I considered this as a maintenance job rather than a new construction job.
Yeah, it is a maintenance job. Did you, um, did you ask him when he put those vinyl windows in his house?
No, ma'am, I didn't ask him anything about his windows.
I don't know if, if our records go back that far to see when those were done. I don't recall them ever coming before us.
Well, there's, he's, his is not the only house down that street that has replacement windows. I just don't know the names of the other people.
Uh-huh.
Well, the windows might look similar, but we don't know exactly what your neighbors' windows are made of, 'cause some, there's some synthetic materials out there that have wood ingrained with them. They have the same long life as vinyl, but they don't have the negative aspects of vinyl over a period of time. So the problem is, is that even though they might look the same, in the same style, we don't know for sure exactly what the material is.
And David, you, you've done a lot of renovation when you, when you lived in the historic district, and you did find things that weren't going to have the bad effects or the down-the-road problems that vinyl windows have, such as, can you iterate a bit?
Yes, and, and it's a, it's a wood synthetic. I'm trying to remember the exact, spent so many moons now to remember the exact name of it, but it was Anderson Replacement Windows.
Yes.
So a synthetic wood would be okay rather than what we have?
Than pure vinyl, because you're, what you're saying is that is, yours only is vinyl. We've also approved over the years, I believe, a lineman cased over wood, but your, your windows have no, nothing but vinyl in them.
Well, I'm not a contractor, don't pretend to be. I can't hardly drive a nail. But I left this, we knew we needed windows. These were all to pieces. Air was coming in. They were leaking on the floor, running my hardwood, and we knew we had to have some windows, and I guess I left that decision up to somebody else as to what kind we put in. I did make sure, my wife made sure, that these windows looked as close to the original as any window we could buy at our price range.
We have no problem with the way the windows look.
We just may not have enough money to live in Murfreesboro.
Well, the, are the number of lights in each window, that is, the number of panes in each window, the same as what was there previously? And you said that you, you got the mullions, the, the spacers between our exterior. They're not between two panes of glass?
Correct.
So they come close, sort of looking like a historic window?
That was some of the considerations we made choosing these, best I could remember.
So, and you said thirty thousand dollars, you thought, for the whole house. How many windows in the whole house?
Could you put up the picture, Amelia, of the twenty eighteen?
I'm gonna say fifteen, individual.
I have one question that doesn't pertain to the aluminum or not, or vinyl. Was there a, a window added in the house that wasn't there, like on the south side? You didn't add a window where it wasn't there, did you?
It was moved.
On the left side?
We shifted one.
Oh, you shifted-
I think the number remains the same.
Yeah, the number remains the same.
I just see it looking different than it looked.
On the front elevation or on the side of the house?
On the side.
Side of the house. So is it visible from the street?
Towards Main Street, so.
South side, yes.
That's all I was asking.
Yeah.
That was the window for the bathroom, I believe I read, that had been in a shower space.
Okay.
They moved.
Oh.
There's some brickwork that will have to be done.
Okay.
Patch that up. I, you know, I wanna add, we, we're not trying to beat anybody up over this. These are standards that, you know, we, we're supposed to abide by. Again, we're trying to protect the district for everyone else who's made the investment in the district. This is a difficult situation for everybody.
It is.
Any other questions?
I think, well, a, a question for our, our staff, actually, more than anything. I know we have, we published the guidelines some years ago, and I don't know how often the guidelines are sent out, or, you know, if we send them out to property owners, or to tenants, or, you know, who, how often this sort of information is updated?
Amelia just-
Say we did the guidelines-
We are currently working on that as we speak.
Okay.
In our offices. They haven't been sent out since I have been-
Yeah.
-involved in historical zoning, which was the latter part of twenty nineteen.
Twenty nineteen, and I think that we worked on these guidelines maybe ten years ago.
I don't know.
It's been a while.
It has been a while, but we did some new mailing, I thought.
We're working on the mailings now.
Yeah, so, and looking over the guidelines, our guidelines, now, the National Park Service Guidelines for Historic Preservation are much more detailed than the guidelines that we wrote that are based on those guidelines. And, and so I think, Bill, that what you're, and you're reading from the National Historic Preservation Act Guidelines, it's a law that was passed in nineteen sixty-six that governs historic preservation in the United States and creates a, a historic district such as this. And I think the guidelines that you have from the National Historic Preservation Act are much more stringent than the guidelines that we wrote, because we simplified them to make it easier for people to, to work with them. And my thought is that, given the fact that you didn't have those guidelines in your hand, and that you went out of your way to try to match the windows as much as possible, that I would be inclined, and, and given the fact that we have possibly approved similar things, but we, what we wanna do is make sure that in the future, people know that, you know, they should act, you know, provide a certain type of material, but not allow this precedent to govern what happens in the future. You know, we, we, we need to acknowledge that maybe we haven't- You know, we, we, we need to acknowledge that maybe we haven't provided the information to people that they need, and so I would be inclined to approve it.
Would this be considered rehab under the, 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 the national standards?
Actually, so there's quite a few different words that, that apply in these kind of cases. There's reconstruction, there's restoration, there's rehabilitation, and demolition, and so there
Sure.
Each one of those words has a different meaning.
Sure, I understand, but this could be rehab.
And, and I would call it
Or restoration.
I would call it rehab, probably, re- rehabilitation, but you get into the nitty-gritty of it, and it is fairly complex. And so that's, that would be my inclination.
Well, I have an appreciation for the effort that was put forth, the matching muntens, the saving, the, the wooden surrounds. It's obvious you guys put some effort into this. It's just a difficult material situation. Any other questions or discussion?
I don't know.
Well, you know, excuse me, Linda.
No, go ahead.
I'm, I'm looking at the national regs and our local regs, and there are statements in both that say changes that have occurred to the property since the property was built that do have some standing. You know, I wish some of those replacement windows had been on the front instead of the side, some of the vinyl that you took off, but, you know, I'm kind of leaning with Gibb a little bit. There, there is something that talks about changes made since the property was built, and they should be. Vinyl windows came in in the mid-fifties, and we came along in the mid-eighties. So.
Do we have a motion?
I move to approve.
Okay, Gibb first, do we have a second?
Second.
David, second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
One opposed, that motion will carry. Windows are approved. Okay, now let's move on to the additional items. Item number two is the brick repair on the left side of the house for the window that was moved that we touched on. That would be where the bathroom area in the house was. That window, it's my understanding, was moved to get it out of the shower area, but maintain a window in the bathroom.
Correct.
So the brick repair, is there any intent of, of painting this brick? How do you intend to match that brick?
Salvaging what we can.
Okay.
We have some salvaged brick and matching the best we can.
Yeah.
New brick that is kind of a mix of those.
Okay. The texture on these are always the difficult.
Here is the old one, one of the old ones.
Okay, okay.
Of course, mortar is close as we get it. Not just simply cutting, but lacing it into the brick all around the window. There's also a place in the back of the house, the same issue that I understand, that's, that's not, it's just the side, so.
Okay.
These, again, are the new brick, and there are some of these with this texture that is in this color range.
Okay.
So mainly the, you want to come see them?
I do.
Can you all see these samples well enough?
I think so.
I can see them.
I'll say something out there, we knew that matching brick was just about impossible.
Yes, sir.
And, and he couldn't have the way it was, but when he was depressed, he was like, I don't want to see that.
And I, a point I would like to make about repairs and additions is that the guidelines under the, the Historic Preservation Act guidelines say when you add a new structure, it should not match perfectly. You want somebody to know when they look at the property that the addition is somewhat different, so they can tell the new construction from the, the old, so that, you know, the, we want it to be somewhat close, but it, it doesn't have to match perfectly under the guidelines.
There's actually two windows.
Two windows?
Mm-hmm, both of them were in the shower.
I got you. Okay. The bricks look about as close as you could possibly find, these nineteen forty era bricks. Do we have any other questions about the brick repair?
No.
We entertain a motion.
I move we approve the brick.
Okay, Linda, do we have a second?
Second.
Gibb, second, okay, all in favor of the brick, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, your brick repair is approved. Next up is the existing solid wooden front door to be replaced with a new door with a three-quarter light, so a larger window in the front door. I, I would almost venture to guess that this is not an original door, or what do you think?
I think it is.
It is original?
It operates like an original one.
Okay. Nineteen forties, I'm, this is, this street happens to be a street that the Bell Brothers built most of the houses. Cliff Bell lived right, right next door to this one, and I take for granted a lot of the materials they used over and over and over again, and this doesn't look like one of their doors, but it's forties instead of twenties, so.
Right.
Yeah.
So you're going back with another solid wooden door?
Only if the homeowner elects to, that's, if not, they'll just leave it like it is, but want approval if they want to do it.
Okay, so you have not replaced the door yet?
Not yet, no.
Okay, so.
There's a possibility we may leave that door also, but, you know, all of the here, we wanted to cover everything that we have.
It is easily repairable, it just needs to be.
No picture of the possible new door, though, in the application?
They were not certain at the time what type of door that they may want. You have a
We have to defer then, don't we?
I think, well, the guidelines, our guidelines say the replacement door should be compatible with the original in terms of style and material, and the original size and shape of door openings should be maintained, so.
We're fine deferring that one.
Without an example, it'd be hard for us to vote on that, and I would urge you, since you are in the historic district, to try to keep the original door if it's functional. It's covered, so hopefully there's no rot. So we are not going to vote on that item, we're going to move along and defer on the item for the front door.
I want to get a clarification of that. If we get there and that door is rotten, which I don't know whether it is or not, or if we want to change it, do we need to come back and ask you guys before we change the door?
Yes, sir. We would need to see an example and, and vote on it. Okay, next up is item number four, to replace the four-inch white gutters with a six-inch bronze gutter. I see now, this item has been taken care of already. Do we have any other pictures of the gutter, Amelia? Okay, I see the downspouts. We got the round downspouts, which is something we have approved, and then the, the main gutter is, is more of a standard modern gutter, probably much like what was there.
It, it's the exact same profile, it's just larger.
Gotcha. Have any questions about the gutters?
No.
Okay.
Make a motion, we approve the gutters as submitted.
David, first, do we have a second?
I second.
Mayor May, second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, gutters are approved. Facia boards to be replaced, I assume, under the gutters, the facia boards are probably in disrepair. Did you replace all of those facia boards, or just as needed?
As needed.
What, and did you go back with the same materials, or?
Yes, same size, same materials, painted.
They're wood? They're wooden facia boards?
Yes.
Any other questions about the facia? We entertain a motion for the facia boards.
Move to approve.
Gibb, is there a first, do we have a second?
Second.
Jeff's the second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Facia boards are approved. Lastly, to remove the shutters. So this photo, we don't have them any longer, but I take it the shutters were
There is one, Amelia, we do have one, I think, when they were still
Original photo with the shutters?
They were not original, they were the plastic.
Okay.
Yeah, they were cracked and falling apart, they weren't wooden shutters.
One of them was just literally hanging there.
They were just on that left-hand side?
The 2018 picture.
There we go.
Okay, okay. I see now, the black, plastic.
Yep.
I think that was a good idea.
Yeah. Get it back to its original look. Okay, no issues there, do we have a motion?
I move we approve the gutters, removal.
Second.
Gibb, second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Removal of the shutters is approved. All right, I believe that completes our list. Thank you so much, again, sorry for the difficult meeting, this is sometimes a difficult situation to deal with materials in the historic district, but thank you so much for your effort in rebuilding the house and bringing it back to its glory, we appreciate it. Well, just next time, you know, if you're making any changes to the exterior that are visible from the street.
Well, I, it's, it's my fault, it's Danny's fault, we, we, I just didn't know that, I thought painting the house or something, we would need to do that, but as far as patching up something or replacing something that was bad, then we would have to do that, so I'll take the blame for it.
Yes, sir, I understand. It's actually a common misconception that we mandate paint colors here, and it's actually something that we don't have a say in, but, but any changes to the exterior appearance of the house in the historic district should come here first for certificate of appropriateness.
Do you have a quick question?
Yes, Jennifer.
If they want to paint the brick, is that something that needs to?
If it's not already painted, uh...
I would have questions about that because of the preservation of the brick, I mean, you're going to seal moisture in the brick.
The guidelines do state, state that if it is not already painted, it is not appropriate to paint it.
Yes, you, we don't, we don't have a say in the color, but painting brick that's never been painted is a different story. Okay, let me back to our agenda here, do we have any other business today? Staff reports or other business, Amelia?
I do want to introduce a new member of our staff that will be helping with the Historic Zoning Commission, Ms. Ashley Fulkrum. Ashley's been with us since August?
September.
September. And of course, we didn't have any historic zoning meetings for several months.
Right.
And so we're introducing Ms. Ashley today.
Welcome, Ashley, thank you.
And as I mentioned earlier, we are working with Ashley's help on pulling together all the information that has been sent out in the past to homeowners as well as tenants in the historical zoning areas to give them all of the information on the regulation and guidelines that are to be followed for homes in the historic district.
Wonderful, wonderful, we'll continue to try to get that information out to everybody.
We could be in for trouble.
All right. There's no other business, uh, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
And Gibb? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hey, we're adjourned, thank you so much.